Okay, I've done a side-by-side grayscale of this stage of the painting next to the original. And my values are pretty close. There's some things that I obviously need to fix, starting from left to right. I think most of this value is pretty good. It's a little bit lighter on the back behind his head. Head is about right. This area under his neck is not near dark enough, this little triangle. This shape is a little bit off and this could be a little bit darker. The light is light enough. Same with this duck. I think the value is good. This could be a little bit darker behind the head, just a little right there. The lower part of his head, from the eye down, is a little darker. Darker on the beak, and of course the beak needs to be defined more. The duck in the foreground, this is all in shadow, so this needs to be darkened along with this area and this area. These are all jumping out. So it's hard to read value sometimes and you'll read something as light. So I was reading this as light as this, and you see it's not. So also the head is mostly in shadow except for this little area on top. So I'll leave this up while I work along with the color version, so I have three images here to refer to. All right, I'm gonna start off by darkening the shadow color behind this back duck's head. And I'll just have to mix some up and test it out because it's my first stab at it this time. That's a little bright, but I don't think it'll hurt it to be brightened up just a bit. So I'm mixing my ultramarine blue mixture that has just a little bit of yellow in it. Because remember we mixed that was ultramarine blue, white with a little speck of yellow in it. And that's dark all the way around. I could lighten the head some, but on this value it's pretty close to the right value. So it just seems to me that it needs to be darker back there. I'm glancing back and forth between the two to check my values. This is popping out a little too much. Really it should be light right here next to the neck. So I'll scumble a little bit along here. Go back into my lighter color as well. It's gonna be light down here. It's kind of a bluish color. It's a pretty cool color right there. Cool, light color. And you'll notice the difference between this middle tone shadow and this light. This is very warm. This is very cool. So train yourself to watch for temperature changes within an area. That's a little better. So I've corrected and brought my light down here. This is a bit darker on the top. Let me go ahead and work some of that in. Again, I'm just using this little soft filbert. I have oiled in the surface so it's not real hard to paint into. It's moving around kind of nicely. And this lower portion of the duck's face is darker. So I'm gonna ask myself, is it cool or warm? A little darker and it's cool and warm. It's cool here on this upper part and darker. So it's hard to read this color whether that's light or dark enough. And I can see that it's too light here. So when I lay the next color on, it's got to be the right temperature and the right value. So that's definitely darker. And then as it moves down, it is warmer. Too red, so I'm gonna go more towards the yellow side. This is a pretty soft brush. It's really a little too soft. So I could probably stand to use the ivory. I think I'll switch to this one. I always switch my brushes first because they have brush cleaner in them. It's also very cool right here on the top of the beak where the beak starts to melt into the melts into the background as well right here. So this stage is so much easier because we've already worked a lot of the problems out and we have something here to compare. There we go. This is a cool tone. Easier to paint that right now with dry paint because it's not turning green. And then it's pretty bright blue up here on the top. I have it yellow, but it's blue. And it's blue right here. And I can probably go ahead and pop just a tiny bit more light right here. Get that head to start popping forward. Reminder, there's this pretty light area here while I have it on the brush. And it can also be a tad bit lighter here. That really makes the head start to come forward. There's some more cool tones I don't have over here, so I'm grabbing into this blue and white. And the value here, let's see, compared to here, could be a tiny bit darker. But there's definitely some cool tones that I don't have. And I'm really dry brushing these on. I'm trying not to put a lot of paint on at this point. I'm using the bright blue, the middle tone of my mixture that I've made down here on the bottom. And there's quite a lot of it right here to make sure I get the right value because I don't want to lighten this up. This is a cool tone and it's a medium dark tone. So I don't want to lose the correct value. Yeah, the stiffer brush works better. Just scumble it over the top. And then I'm gonna get another brush. I'm gonna try to have one for the yellow and one for the cool blue tones. So I want to mix in some yellow here. It's actually, there's a little bit of a peachy tone in there as well. Right next to the neck. Little peach tone. That's really pretty. See it down here? While I have it, go ahead and pop a little bit over here. All the way around this transition, you can see where the shadow meets the light is usually where you'll find a little interesting color. So make yourself be on the lookout for places you see unexpected color. So this is my warm brush. And I will have to look at this again. And then I'm switching back to my cool brush, back and forth. I will have to check these values again because they are... It's hard to read value sometimes. This is very warm under the neck. So I'm gonna switch now and move to a small brush and while I'm on this one duck, because it does feel better to go ahead and get some of the detail done on him before I move on to another one. And I'm gonna get a little medium on my brush and some of this raw sienna color just because I want to kind of come in here and draw. I am gonna use a maul stick because my canvas is a little sticky and you see I've left some spots here where my fingernail's been resting while I paint. So the maul stick keeps me from doing that. And I want to zoom in and look at this duck, his beak a little closer. I'm not gonna think about value right now. I just want to look at the detail of it. And again, this is a lot more gratifying. I put a little bit of blue in with this raw sienna color just to darken it. So I'm gonna use a little bit of mineral spirits, just a clean brush to soften where the beak attaches to the face. Feels too harsh right there. And then I want to put a little bit of that really light color behind the beak to reshape it just a little because it's gotten too wide again. So here. And on the upper side is more of a cool blue tone. So I'm gonna reach in here with my ultramarine blue and white. And I want to keep it pretty light but cool on this side. Reshape this side of the beak. It's much thinner up here. Dip back into my orange just a bit. I still have this light place on his beak too, too light. There we go. Now, I think the head looks pretty good. This could have a little bit of work on it, this little dark place under the neck. Seems like his neck's too thin. So I'm gonna widen it just a little. And that raw sienna color comes down into the neck a bit more. Do I see that anywhere else? And I still have lost a bit of this dark line. So I'll try to get that back in. That is raw sienna with ultramarine blue in it. So I have medium with this and I'm twisting my brush to get it to load properly. There's a little dark piece right here as well. All right, so now it's a back and forth thing because now I've got the beak a little too wide again at the bottom. There's a little tail on the end that I don't like right here. I'm thinking feathers as I blend this out. And a tad bit of light over here to make it glowy. A little smidge more on the head right there. Maybe a tiny bit of this green, this yellow color on here would be pretty. Yeah, I like that. I don't want to get too light down here because this is not a real light area, but it's glowy. End up with a lot of green there, but that's okay. So now I want to tend to the eye here a little bit and skinny up the beak. I did get, still got the beak a little wider than I meant for it to be. Right here. Here, that feels better. A little better. All right, so again, the beak, the longest part is just short of the head. So it's about right. And I want to tend to this just a little. The eye, I think we can go ahead and put some of the eye on right now. I'm a little close. And where you place the eye is pretty important because it will look funny. It'll look like they're cross-eyed if you put the eye in the wrong place. So it's a good idea to check whenever you're putting animals' eyes on. It's a good idea to check to see, usually they're halfway down the head. If it's a baby animal, they're lower than that. So I'm gonna go to the middle of the eye. It's a little lower than halfway that way. And the head is turned so, and it's a little further to the right. So I'm gonna guess, and I'm gonna start with a... I'm not gonna start with black. I'm gonna use a little bit of medium. I'm gonna use a dark blue first. And I'm gonna say about here. All right, so it's less than halfway there. That's right. Less than half, so that's about right. That's about right. If you get them too high or low, they'll look really weird. So you gotta be really careful about that. And typically there is some pure black in eyes. This looks like black on the painting, but I'm not gonna put black. I think I'm just gonna leave it dark blue for right now. So I'll just leave it like this for the muck time being. This little brush here is not the best. And the darker that shadowed area is, the more stern the duck looks. So you'll want to be careful with how dark you get that socket. I'm just gonna put a little bit of medium with a tiny bit of blue on it and pull this down just a little. I just kind of wrecked it. See how easy a little tiny area like that is to mess up? So I have too much medium and it's dripping. So let me come back in here and take the medium off. Got a dark eyebrow now. So a lot of times it's just as much to do with how to fix your goof-ups. And they're always fixable. This top edge is not quite so sharp. Remember it's an indention in the head. It's a socket. And you want a small brush for this because this is a really small area. So I started darkening this shadowed side and I had some camera issues. So I'm back and I'm going to... This is way too blue. I'm looking at this area that is a combination of blue and yellows. And I know I'm getting a little too dark with it, so I'm gonna try to come in here with some yellow ochre. I'd rather see yellow ochre and raw sienna in this right now. And I just need to make sure my values are dark enough. So there's a little bit of a raw sienna and blue back here in this, there's a little triangle right here. About here. That's pretty important. So I want to get that in. Get this in. You can see that wing right there. I don't really have that defined very well. So it's okay to make it a little stronger than it needs to be, a little bigger than it needs to be. Because remember we're always carving things down with the next layer. Pretty warm down here. There's some warmth in and around here as well. Down in here for sure. So I'm looking at the angles. There's this angle, then there's this angle, then there's this angle, then there's this angle. So it's one, two, just straight up and down here. Then it's this way on the back side. And it's this way. So that's pretty close. Really looks like he's tipping over. This angle, it's like that. So it doesn't hurt to go back around and check those things. So I've laid a lot of areas of raw sienna. There's a little bit more right in here next to the base of the neck, about here. Just putting those a little stronger so you can see them. And then look at the length from here to the beak. Comes about straight down from where the eye should go. It's a pretty good bit of space there. And then this goes almost vertical right here, the front. That's where the back tufts separate there and you can almost see an oval. An oval here and an oval here. So I'll lay that in kind of thin with a glaze. And see, because I made this peachy color really strong, it's holding up for the blending. So now I wanna, I've switched to another brush. At this point, I don't remember which one has got which on it because I'm just not that organized, but I want to go work on the head just a little bit. I'll switch back to a rosemary ivory. And you almost have to guess on this first. I know that my values for the head are pretty close. This needs to be darker. But it's really blue. In fact, that might not be too bright. It's about the right value. It's pretty bright though, so I'm gonna mix a tiny bit of yellow with it to tone it down. I want to pull that around and into the front part of the head. I'm just dragging a little over the top there. Pretty cool through this midsection of the head. It's pretty cool. And I'm dragging the blue over the orange here, which looks pretty good. I think I'm just gonna leave it like that. There's a lot of blue in here. Lot of blue around the bottom. And again, I'm just scumbling that over all the way over here. Some blue up in here. And really this little one or two dips is going a long way to just drag it over the top here. This was the wrong color. I got that almost too much ultramarine blue. Didn't have any yellow in it to tone it down. Lot of cool tones in these back feathers. Right along in here, it's cool tones. A little bit right here. Now remembering that this still, this is too light. This is all shadow. So there's just a little piece of light here and a little tiny bump of light right there. So I need to tone this down. It's too yellow. So I ask myself, is it warm or is it cool? And it's kind of hard to tell. It's got warm underneath it with some cool over the top. That's too dark. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna get a little bit of blue with white and has a little yellow in it. I want to let some of that peachy color show through. I don't want to totally cover it. Those are the lightest spots on this duck. And you see how well they work now that we've got the shadows darker now. Now I just have to work them in. So, I have blue on this brush. And I'm asking myself, if there's. Blue and a raw sienna down here. Kinda wraps around the bottom. And there's a little bit of that here. Back to the light. Goes down a bit further. I wanna work this in. And again, make this light bigger than it should be, so that when you start blending, you don't lose it all. Now I can come back in here with the blue. And soften that in. It's really a lot of blue around the. The face here. And I can go back to the raw sienna and blue again. Um, and make sure I have. This area here dark enough. Right here, right here. And another brush here that's a little softer, let me move to that. My, kinda my unifying harmonious color here is the blue, ultramarine blue with the little yellow in it. And I'm just using that to soften this, these other colors in with. Wiggle that in a little, so it's not such a straight line. There we go. I wanna grab a little bit of that bu- kinda blue gray color. To. Darken that. Sock it a bit. Then wipe my brush off, come back in and work it in, because it's a bit too dark. Got a little bit of that light blue on there, just to soften it in. There, that looks better. I like that to be a little more zigzaggy in there, and this doesn't look good here. Let me work that in. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and put a little bit of an eye in there. Try not to use too much medium this time, cuz it'll drip. And remember, the eye is about halfway on the width. It's a little bit closer to the top. Than it is the bottom. Well, it's close to halfway. If you're not sure, always start with a lighter color before you jump in there with a really dark color. It's a lot easier to do, um, to correct. It just looks better to start with, so I'm gonna go ahead and put that eye in, and I'm gonna come back up here and. And try to place this eye again. Cuz I lost it, and the paint's had a little bit of time to dry. There we go. Alright, this duck feels better, looks better to me, I haven't worked on the beak at all. So the value of the beak is middle tone. And, let's see. I just wanna try to redefine the, the whole shape of the beak. So think about the hands of the clock when you're looking at the direction for these beaks. Cuz they'll look funny if you have them. The angle off. This is really dark, so I'm using raw sienna and ultramarine blue. But it's getting too blue, so I'll add some more red to it. Just to warm it up. Yeah, that's better. A little bit of a bend to it, so you, um, also measure the length of the beak at its highest point here. To the tip. Is the same as three quarters of the way up the head. So it could come to about right here. Now I probably should've worked on that background first, because I'll have to come in around it. Which is. Usually a little challenging. And it's a warm. Dark. And it's sticky over here, because it's not quite dry. But you can reshape the beak a little bit with this background. Just get it as dark as you can. And again, if your paint's not dry and you're using a bristle brush, it's, it is gonna lift it off. So you have to handle the brush a little differently, you need to flip it around in your hand. And. Lay it on heavier, which means it's gonna take longer to dry. Remember to keep your strokes in the water all horizontal. This is really dark, and it gets bluer as it gets closer to the duck. That negative space is very round right there. And I wanted to put some grasses right here. Um, not sure I'm gonna have room for that, but. We'll see, I can come back in here and see. Also might want to correct some of this. Water around the top feathers up here. Feet are actually. Back here. So if I measure from the front of the duck to the feet. It's the same as almost to the tail from the head. So, oh, I'm not too far off, right there is where they should go. And they're orangish. So I can go back with my light colored brush, if I can find it. And. Scumble over that area a little bit. There we go. And a little bit of. This shadow color down at the bottom. This is, this edge here is a bit hard. So I would like to go back in there and soften that up with one of these little tiny brushes, maybe, if it'll work. I really need a small one, so. Go back in here and just barely tap on that. Soften it up. That's the beauty of these little brushes, when you have areas that are too harsh like that. That feels better, and actually around the edge of the duck too, to make him feel more. Um, feather like. No hard edges. I still feel like this is a little bit taller from here to here. Is the same as what just above the beak, here to here. So yeah, that could come down just a tiny bit. Yeah. And then. Use your. Medium and. Raw sienna down here to wiggle it in. So it's not such a hard edge. Alright, so now that duck needs a little bit of work, and I can step back, and I do wanna work on the water. So there's still a lot to do, this may take us the four weeks yet. Um, to do, I'd rather not rush, I'd rather do a good job on it, learn everything I can. I think that's one of the areas that we fall short in, is we just get tired of it, we wanna move on to something else, and we don't take things. Um, as far as we could. I do wanna get away from this as well, and look at it from a distance. So I'm gonna go ahead and get ready, move this dark duck in, see how I can correct him. My values are pretty good on it, I do need to lighten here. Need to work on the beak some. Clean up some of this in here. But the values are good, so. Um. I got back away from it, uh, got a little bit of pure blackout. In case I need it, just for the eyes, this duck is the darkest of the three. And. His neck is a little off, so I need to correct, this is the whole biggest area that needs correcting right here. So I think I'll start with that first. Um, I started to say while I'm fresh, but I'm not really fresh right now. But that's alright. You do what you have to do. And I'm gonna start. With some ultramarine blue. And a little bit of the dark mixture that I have, I wanna remember to use the mauve stick, because I'm making lots of little marks. The paint is, um, tacky. So I want to darken this lower portion of his head first. These nice darks in. That wraps around, so that changes this value just a bit when I do that. Um, I believe it's pretty dark down here as well. And I'm looking at the relationship between the neck. This really dark area here. It is a purplish dark, so it's gonna have some red mixed in. And. This is where it really begins to get purplish, right in this area. And then there's a big dark area. It's reading pretty dark on here, but I still think I could glaze over it. Darken it even more. And then it goes down. Just kinda watching my negative space. Like this. And the ducks feel a little separated from the water. So I'm gonna end up probably glazing the water with some ultramarine blue. To try to. Sit these ducks down, to try to make them feel like they're in the water, and not sitting on top of the water so much. This whole segment of the back is dark. And it's a pretty dark purple color instead of so blue, it's purpler, as it goes up closer to the light, it gets redder. And warmer. But down here by the water, it's pretty cool. Alright, I don't have this right at all. So I'm gonna clean my brush up, I like this little small filbert, even though it was flayed a little bit. At the, um. Tops, still, once I've gotten it wet again, it's working okay. I'm gonna come in here and darken this area. Give him a neck, he just didn't have much of a neck. Also see some green tones in there. So I'm gonna mix that green right into the, I had some green mixed up, I'm gonna mix that in with the yellow. And just really take it a, a part like a puzzle. And look at each little piece, make sure it's dark enough, squint your eyes a lot. There's a real warm tone along the bottom right here. It's already pretty warm here, it just seems like. See, the width of it comes out from the side of his head over here. Seems like it could be a little wider. Right there, it's probably too light. So I'll put some raw sienna color in there instead. So, again, these beaks are lined up pretty level. That one maybe should come down a bit more, but. I'm gonna go ahead and get a little bit lighter for this. Just a little piece of that light right here. And then the neck. And I need to put. I need to elongate this neck a little bit. So I'm gonna. Come in here and redraw that a little bit. So I don't quite have enough room for this beak. So let me measure and see what's going on, from the neck to the top of the head is the same as. So let me measure and see what's going on. From the neck to the top of the head is the same as from the neck almost to the bottom. So neck to the top of the head. Yeah, so that's way off. Top of his head comes even. The top of that one's beak. That one comes. So from here to here is the same as there to there. So I don't know what it is. Let's see. Let me keep working on it and see if I can figure it out. Knew this beak here would give us the most trouble. I'm looking at the negative space here. Maybe I just need to bump this down a tiny bit. And I need to fix this backside of the duck anyway, so I'll go ahead and do that. And comes right along in here. That needs to be lighter, so I don't want to put too much of that right there. Put a little of this purple here. Wiggle it around in here. Let me go back, get a brighter blue for the top of his head here. And there is an eye over here somewhere. Let's see if we can softly put it in. Seems like it's, can just barely see a hint of it. Kind of crazy looking. So I'm just gonna imply that there's an eye over here. Yeah, that's all I'm gonna do. And a little bit of a light plane over here to describe these feathers a little. That is the backside of the duck. Don't have quite enough room right here. These feathers, I think, come down lower. These maybe go over a bit farther. So they're kind of bluish. Can move those over a little. It wouldn't hurt to drag some blue glaze over the top. Just barely over the top of this side. Just shadow it down a little more. I've got a light in this area and I need to attend to this a little, so I'm gonna do that kind of quickly. Not gonna fret over it too much. Keep that cool. And then grab a little bit of the lavender color for back here. I'm gonna have to try a couple different versions of it to see how light it needs to go. Alright, I'm gonna stop because I am starting to spin my wheels. And I am kind of making it up a little bit. So I lost a little bit of the dark right here since I moved that over. And I want to make sure. It's very hard to see what's going on back here. I want to make sure that I have that dark enough. I really don't see an eye there. But let me put a little dot in there just to indicate something. And let's grab a tiny bit of dark to go around the edge. And I want to glaze the background real quick and then we are going to stop. I'm going to stop. So I like a little flat brush for this. I'm gonna draw these mongoose. So I took out some more ultramarine blue. And I'm mixing it with a little raw sienna just to give it a little bit of warmth. And I'm gonna try to glaze over a good bit of this water. Just to unify it a little bit. It's too broken up for me. It does not feel like it's really water. So maybe even in some areas, I'm just putting glaze. And I'm gonna drag a little bit of that ultramarine blue with the raw sienna in it. Down here. And really, my background was not covered well, so it needed something. It needed to be unified here. And the areas where I want to leave color, I'm just gonna put pure glaze over the top. Okay, so I've got it pretty wet. Now let me go ahead and see if I can pop some sparkles in here. It has that feeling of water now because it's so wet. And hopefully my reflections will lay in a little better. I don't like this too much. I want to fix that. I can pull some of that back out, I think. Alright, so what I want to do for the sparkly areas is I want to go first, remember we want to sneak up on it? And just do a little bit lighter first. Before we start adding the lightest light. So I'm using just raw sienna. And remember, I wanted it to come down around like this, here. This duck has some reflections. A little bit here. 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 Might be a bit here too. So you've got this anxiety going this way. Then I'm gonna move to a little bit lighter with the cad yellow light. And I'm gonna pop some dapples. And because it's so wet, it's laying on here really nice. You're gonna pick up, because you've got all this wet color, you're gonna pick up paint, so you want to be careful. And then in front of this duck, there's some nice little ripples here. One, two, three, four that kind of go down into there. Don't have the blue there either, so I want to put that in. And there's some nice little ripples. Again, this is cad yellow and white with a little bit of the yellow ochre mixture in it. Let's see. A little piece of feather over there. A bit of something here. Something there. Sparkles. But really and truly, the reflections look better when you're working until wet. So I'm gonna go one degree lighter and see what happens. Just a couple places like here. There. Tiny bit right here. Now I'm gonna dip into the blue. Because I really love that blue color that's over here in the water. Yeah, beautiful. Some back here. And I mixed a little medium with it on this soft brush so that it just kind of drags. And remember, we saw some up here in front of this duck as well. It's really pretty. Where else? You know, we get, you have to be careful because you get carried away. If a little bit is good, then a whole lot is better, but not true. Just a little really can make a difference. It can be so much more powerful if you just use a little bit. Alright, so let me take a softening brush real quick and with my maul stick because I don't want to get into this paint. I want to soften these in just a bit if they're sticking out too much. Reflections will go up and down sometimes, particularly if there's trees. But when you come back in and affect them, you want to go back out and make them more horizontal. These are kind of the roundness of the duck right there. Soften those feathers a bit. I think the eyes definitely need a little bit of a highlight. I kept saying I'm gonna stop and then I see a couple other things to do. I'm gonna get a little bit of my light yellow that I've used on the ducks as a highlight. Little medium and I'm spinning my brush. And I know from painting birds that their lids, they have a little light piece of lid around the edge. That's too big, but I'll fix it. Usually it's kind of in an asymmetrical way the light hits, the way the light hits it. He hasn't painted it that way. So I put it on and it's a little too big, so I'm cleaning my brush off. And come back in here and carve it down just a bit. There we go. And to make eyes come to life, you want to put a highlight on them. And you try to figure out how the light's coming. So this is dappled light. It's hard to say. It looks like he has a highlight on the upper part. Just want a tiny one. I don't want it to jump out. Alright, that feels pretty good. I could pop a little more light on the top of this beak, just a tiny bit. And I can probably work on this again, but I am gonna stop. I'm gonna step away. I'm gonna take another picture of it and check my values. And before it dries tonight, I'm gonna come back in. It's time for dinner, so I'm gonna go in and fix dinner and come back in and have another look at it in case there's anything I need to soften before it dries. Some of these spots may be too bright, but I don't have any objectivity now, so it is time to move away.